Hey Taylor.
Yes.
All right, consent agenda passes. Thank you all very much. Moving right along to public comments. We had one item of public comments submitted for a time for inclusion in the package. But anyone from the public who is called in would like to speak for three minutes on any non-agenda item. This is now your time. I will pause here and give a chance for anyone to unmute themselves and speak up. Neither hearing or seeing anyone. We will move right on to our action item for this which is the JVA proposal for design of the transportation project.
Okay, that's me. All right, so thank you, board and mayor. We I've been talking about the tip project for over a year now. We talked about it a little bit in the last workshop. I've been going to various boards to discuss the the project and gather input. And I think back in June, I asked the BOT to submit a task order for JVA to provide a proposal. And so here we are tonight with a proposal from JVA. And and essentially, that's it in a nutshell. I'm looking for board consensus to accept the the proposal from JVA and move on to the next step of design. It's a long CDOTs process is very rigid and multi-step. So this is the next step in the process to move along, move the project along and start actually making headway on it on a design. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Chris. I'm actually gonna start here. I got a couple of quick questions for you because I know that we approve putting this task order out to JVA pension. And I know that this overall tip project is $1.5 million project in this this phase of the the engineering scope or their proposal comes out to about 225,000, I believe.
Yes.
Is that in line with the the budget we had for this project when we proposed the 1.5 million? Is that kind of right where we expected higher, lower?
It's a it's a little bit under.
Okay.
I went through a review process with CDOT. First of all, to ensure that JVA's rates are fair and reasonable. And then I also go through a process with them with each phase of the the project of estimating costs based on previous projects and on the the representatives of CDOTs experience of projects similar to Netherlands and eventually came down to a number that I submitted to them prior to asking JVA for a proposal. So I kind of already had a budget number in mind when I asked JVA for their proposal and they came in a little bit under.
Okay. And I'm guessing this is a given, but JVA has done a lot of these sort of CDOT level projects. They they understand. They know the extra levels and hoops that they're gonna have to jump through to work with CDOT and.
Yes.
Cool. All right. Thank you very much. Open this up for other trustees and we'll just go down the line to see if they have any questions for Chris. Alan?
I don't look good.
All right, Eric.
No questions.
Very good. Julian.
Looks fine.
Lindsay.
Hey, sorry. It looks good for me, too.
Okay, and Tanya.
I have no questions.
All right, wow. Guess that means this was a well-written name. Congratulations, town staff. This is a public. This is an action item. We want to open this up for public questions, comments. If anyone from the public would like to speak on this particular action item, now would be your time to to speak up. I am not seeing nor hearing anything from the public. So we'll bring it back to the town board for any further comments by members of the Board of Trustees or a motion to approve the proposal for design of the tip project.
This is Alan. I move approval.
Oh, second. Trustee Danforth.
We have a motion and a second. Miranda.
Trustee Act.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yeah.
Trustee Coombs Ismael.
Yes.
Mayor Larson. Mayor Larson.
Oh, yes.
Trustee Taylor. Trustee Garblin.
Yes.
All right, very good. JVA is on the board for for a proposal.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. All right, we are moving along into our discussion items and I believe this is this also you, Chris?
Yes.
All right, Safer Streets Initiative Grant.
Okay, so a couple of weeks ago, I became aware of a grant opportunity through Dr. Cog. Similar to the tip grant, it is federal funds and the grant focuses on safety, pedestrian and bicycle safety. For areas of Dr. Cog's Metro Vision Transportation Regional Transportation Plan. And with a little bit of COVID-19 sprinkled in, seems like a lot of these grant opportunities kind of want to know the impacts of of the pandemic on your community and and how this project will address those impacts. So I in your packet, there's a application and and sort of eligibility guideline. I had come up with a few project ideas based on city, based on community feedback over the years and what I thought could be eligible funding for this project. We're a little bit outside their main area of focus, which is Region One, more of the the metro area and safety concerns around pedestrians and bicycles down in the city. Nonetheless, it is available to Region Four as well and for all those same concerns that we have up here. So I think there is an opportunity to maybe fix some things in Netherlands. And so I chose the the thoughts I had about the projects that I think may benefit Netherlands. It is some pedestrian crosswalks. And the reason for that is that every year I get feedback on the crosswalks not being painted. I mean, every year and and CDOT can be difficult as to when they can paint them and going through their sort of schedule for for addressing that. So I thought that was one safety concern that could be addressed with this grant. And my thinking was maybe using different materials to better define a crosswalk at the first street and Highway 119 and then at the the library, both those places I I get feedback on all the time. So so that and then the second piece, I thought we could address with these grant dollars is improving the surface of the sidewalk that's sort of in front of the library on the on Highway 72 going yes, north, south, but in town is really east, west. And again, the sidewalk is a soil surface. It is not ideal for ADA accessibility and I think it could be improved. And and is essentially ready to go to to install papers, which was the original design for that sidewalk. And so those two projects I thought might be a good fit for this funding. I picked a number out of the blue. The minimum grant amount is $250,000. This is a federal grant, requires a 20% match. The some entities would say that federalizing a grant is not worth it for under a million. And there is some truth to that. However, I don't think Netherlands can do 20% of a million dollars at the moment. Unless there was a project that the board felt it's really worth it. The the other thought I had was JVA is well positioned as our town engineer to take on these types of grant projects. And so I think we're the first of all, the project is simple. And then I think we're in a good position to be able to manage these funds with JVA. And so I estimated a number of $350,000 to do those three tasks. And and so I'm bringing it here in front of the board to get input from you and to see, first of all, if you'd like me to pursue these funds. And then secondly, if you'd like me to ask the DDA to support this project with with a match. So with that, I'll open it up to the board.
Thank you, Chris. Out of curiosity, can we propose to do things like, you know, an improved pedestrian crossing on the peak to peak? You know, something like, I guess, I my mind, I'm thinking of something like a raised crosswalk or some something there to make it more significantly or more obvious. It's a crosswalk. Can we propose to do that on CDOT on a state highway?
I believe we can. Yeah, or you know, we do have to work within their constraints, but part of the project is for state highways. Traffic calming is part of the the funds that they're the projects that they're supporting. And and again, maybe changing the materials of the highway in addition to maybe signalized pedestrian crossing. And whatever other types of traffic calming could be a good fit for this project.
All right. Thank you for that. I'll open this up to the board for questions for Chris and we'll just work in reverse order this way. Tanya?
Uh, hi. Well, I'm 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 wondering if we can afford $70,000, the town in Netherlands and the DDA. I mean, it's not it's not free money. The DDA has money, but it's not just free. It all comes out of taxes and whatnot for basically what essentially looks like crosswalks, which seems like that wouldn't cost nearly that amount of money. And to fix the sidewalks that were poorly designed five years ago, or whenever it was you guys did those, it would seem it to me, it seems kind of like a too much money, a waste of $70,000. If town's money, I could probably put to other use. I think we should definitely improve this crosswalks. But there's projects in town, for instance, the pedestrian bridge over by the teen center that's been needing work for a long time. You can't push a wheelchair or a stroller on that. And that seems like it it should be fixed. And I just don't hear anybody talking anymore about the second bridge that's needed so much in this town for evacuation purposes. For like, so that's just my two cents on it. $300,000 to improve those sidewalks that you guys approved to build that way five years ago, whenever you did it, seems like a waste of money in my book.
Thank you, Tanya. Alan? I'm going this way again.
Well, I really, I think it's a good project and I think it's something we need to do. So I guess I would. I understand that it seems like a lot of money. But projects like this always cost more than you think they're going to. I concur that we should try to be improving all the sidewalks throughout town. But this is a good starting point and I like the looks of it. I guess my question was would be can we improve more sidewalk in other parts of town? Or do you think that would be too big a scope? What do you think, Chris?
Possibly, but there has to be good connectivity, sort of a termination when it comes to these types of projects.
Yeah.
And I'm not entirely sure I can use these grant dollars to upgrade a project that was created with other grant dollars. So I don't have a clear answer on that yet. I think there is a little bit of daylight in between these two projects where I can justify these upgrades for safety and ADA accessibility and stuff. But I don't know more in the coming weeks.
Okay, well, I think it's a it's a good step in the right direction.
John? Lindsay?
Yeah, I agree. I think this is important for us to to go after. I personally like to see more of our pedestrian crossings improved. I saw there's only two listed on there, but we have more than that. And I think having them raised would be a really good thing. So they're a little more visible than any way we can make them more visible for people, for drivers is going to be really important. And also, I saw that there was, you know, installing traffic calming components and and to reduce speeds. Is that something like having a sign on, you know, the other side of the bridge that people coming from the south will know that there's a pedestrian crossing right on the other side of the bridge? That one of the options?
That could be. I guess I was thinking more along the lines of Highway 72 leaving town is pretty fast. I've received a lot of comments about wanting to reduce those speeds. And I thought through these funds, it'd be a good opportunity to stump that that goal to reduce speeds through there and slow traffic down and and but it could happen all over. And for that matter, we could add more crosswalks to um, this is really an open forum for the BOT to to provide input and and I can change it. I haven't written the grant. I have kind of a draft going, but I didn't want to put a lot of energy into it. And then the other thing I wanted to keep in mind was was price because I am going to be asking the DDA for the match to these funds. I think they're perfectly positioned to provide the match. This is square within their their district and pedestrian safety and visitor safety. I I assume is a high priority for the DDA. So I thought this might be a nice match for them as well.
Yeah, I I agree on that. But I think my only comments are I'd like to see all of the crosswalks going across the peak to peak, have those improved, repainted, something to make them visible and raised crosswalks in our busiest sections, I think would improve safety as well. So those are those are my comments on this. So thank you for pursuing this.
And I guess one of the thoughts I had with the raised sidewalk or the change in materials to better define the sidewalk is also has a sustainability component which is not really requiring CDOT to have to come paint them every year, or really they paint every three years. This would help alleviate, you know, their demand. Which their list is endless of stuff that they have to do. So that was another thought that I was hoping would be attractive to the to the funder.
Thank you, Lindsay. Julian?
So yeah, this is interesting. I know that I I'm I'm with Tanya on the expense. It seems like a lot of expense for not dealing with the overall problem of crosswalks, which seems kind of a big issue. Just as a bit of anecdotal information, this is not information that anybody should take as what it is we, you know, as as evidence, we need to do something. But Jeanette, my spouse, and I decided to see what Colorado highways looked like going through Breckenridge, Dillon and Silverthorne. And Jeanette was under the impression that they had much better crosswalks than we did. And turns out that's not true. They're all bad. So it's it's an interesting. It's an interesting problem all over the state where if it's a CDOT highway going through a town, the crosswalks are horrible. So it would be really interesting to see if there were a way to get at the root cause of that overall problem. But anyway, as I say, just a little bit of anecdotal information there. And I agree with Lindsay that it would be kind of nice. I I think it would be good to focus on the crosswalks because this town has some serious problems with crosswalks, especially with cases where we have sidewalks that look like they're coming up to a crosswalk and then we discover it's not a crosswalk. So I'm not sure I I'm against going for the grant. I'm just wondering if there might be a way to focus on crosswalks primarily to just get that problem solved for the town. So those are all there's. Those are my only thoughts.
Thank you, Julian. Eric?
Yeah, I mean, I think that what is being proposed to be fixed needs to be fixed and that it's it's a good idea and a good opportunity for us to pursue. I mean, similarly to Tanya, it does seem it does seem to me to be a lot of money. But maybe that concern could be alleviated if it if we broadened if or if we were you felt we were able to broaden the scope and really say, we're gonna install the crosswalks in the downtown area from the bridge and the carousel like all the way through the peak to peak to 72 and really solve that problem for the town, as Julian said, just seeing the the estimate from JVA of 225,000 for the tip project makes me feel like perhaps we could get more out of 350,000 for this project. I obviously, I'm not an engineer and I don't know, but I wonder if you feel like maybe we might be able to broaden the scope and claim that this would solve the kind of a a crosswalk hazard pedestrian hazard problem that is in the town of Netherlands, because I think that that's pretty accurate, actually.
Well, I the the number of 350 was a bit of a shock from the hip. I do think these projects tend to be pretty expensive. And $100,000 to install a crosswalk, if we're talking about raising it, maybe signalizing it, expanding the width of it. You do sometimes see crosswalks that go diagonally instead of just per or perpendicular across the highway. Which also provides a little bit more separation between pedestrians and cars and reduces that sort of stop-start kind of thing that happens, especially over there by the visitor center. So, you know, I don't know exactly how much they're gonna cost. I I am being kind of conservative. I don't want to ask for not enough. So like I said, I think $100,000 for a crosswalk is is probably in the range. But no, there could be cheaper versions for the crosswalks that are as heavily traveled, like for example, over there by Ace. There could be a different style of crosswalk there that isn't as expensive as kind of what I'm thinking over by the visitor center. So if it's the board's desire to sort of nix the the walking path and focus only on crosswalks, that's fine with me.
I do think it might be a shame to nix the walking path, though, because if we have JVA doing this tip project and then right after it, we have the same people designing this next project, we'll have some continuity. You know, it will be all connected up. It it kind of it just kind of makes sense to pursue something like this. I mean, I guess we might not get it anyway. So we'll see there. And the other question I had was if there are other maintenance problems that arise with raised crosswalks that we that we might not be thinking of or be aware of. Because painting seems like, you know, a fairly easy maintenance problem compared to what might happen if a raised crosswalk starts to degenerate.
There probably are. I don't know.
Right. And then would that become, would it be the town's responsibility? Would we be allowed to do that? Would it be a would we have to be working with CDOT or waiting before we could repair raised crosswalks? I just don't want to put us in a situation where we install these nice new things that break and then we can never get them fixed.
Understood. And I would almost, I would bet that CDOT would ask the town to maintain them if we built them. I can't say for sure. But again, I think pedestrian safety is a priority here. Maybe we just have to figure it out.
Yeah, I mean, I would be in favor of pursuing this grant and then we can make a better informed decision if we actually get it as well.
What's the timeline, Chris?
I have to submit the grant August 14. So I'll talk to the DDA on August 12. They're meeting there and if the BOT is supportive of me going to the DDA and asking them to 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 fund this project, if that's, you know, something that group wants to do, then that's my plan. I'm on their agenda for for Wednesday, the 12.
Okay. I think, yeah, I think I agree with everyone else. The idea of, you know, be able to do something about the crosswalks and use it as both as improved safety as well as a traffic calming with the idea of maybe a raised one so that has, you know, forces people to slow down, I think is a is a great idea. And if that's something that this grant can actually be used for, I know there's, you know, pretty stringent restrictions on what this money can be used for around town. But it sounds like this was something that could be used for. I think it's worth pursuing. I want to open this up here if anyone from the public would like to speak on this. It's a discussion item. I just see Ron come up for quick.
Well. I'm very interested in looking at it. I'm always interested in public safety and pedestrian safety. And I just tuned in a second ago, so I I don't really have any comment at this point. But I will be looking at it closely and comment more later.
All right. Thank you, Ron. Anyone else in the public like to speak on this? See a handful on here? Not. I'll bring it back to the board. So what we're looking this is a discussion item. What kind of direction are we giving? A not a four on Chris pursuing the two separate nods of four, one on pursuing the grant and one on the DDA about co-funding?
Yes, that is exactly what we're looking for.
Okay.
Well, I'm curious about what the calming components are gonna be.
I don't know what specifically calming components are available, whether it's simply raising the sidewalk could be considered calming. The change in color and materials might provide a calming effect. Sometimes adding a medium can provide that slowing and calming effect. And there's a variety of ways to do that. I'm not the expert on that. But I think if we do get the funds, we can present those options to the board and the DDA as to what best fits Netherlands.
All right. Well, since it's kind of hard to do a not a four via virtuals webex, I'm just gonna go through and it's not. This is not a vote or anything, but I'm gonna just call out names and see. You can let me know if you're nodding your head that yes, both twos, one to whether we would want Chris to pursue this grant opportunity. And secondly, whether or not we want to look at partnering with the DDA as a funding to match the funding match. So Alan?
Yes, I believe we should.
Is that yes to both?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Eric?
Yes, to both, though I I would love to see if, I know this probably doesn't exist, but if there were any ways to match that funding, if there was another option, I'd like to be presented with that.
Okay. Julian?
Nodding to yes.
Yes, to both. Lindsay?
Yeah, to both.
Yes, to both. There we go. And Tanya?
Yeah, I bet I have some reservations. I would definitely want more research done on that raised sidewalk to know if it's going to be causing us more problems than not, but and finding different price points for what different things can do instead of more informed next time you come with prices of things. And I'm also not really in favor of fixing the sidewalks right now of the ones that were already done recently.
Okay. And I'm in favor of both of pursuing the grant, you know, particularly since we're, you know, anything that gets done is going to come back to the board. Should we win the grant for actual analysis and determination of what the traffic calming will be, what the project will look like? And also yes to the DVA. So that is a not a four for both items, Chris.
Okay, great. So to be clear, am I removing the the component of improving the the sidewalk and just focusing on crosswalks?
Personally, I would, you know, I you're the one, I haven't read the grant proposal, the application proposal. So I don't know if by doing so, does that hinder our likelihood of being funded since it is a safety and and train alternative transportation pedestrian safety. So is that, leaving it in there could help our case?
It's an inexpensive way to provide connectivity to our crosswalks. So I thought it does help our case. Yeah, I think it does help. And to Eric's point, there is a little bit of continuity to to this project with the tip project, which was another kind of thought behind focusing on that sidewalk in addition to it being dirt, not not in the best shapes.
This is Julian. I wonder if what we might do is see this as a lab for an improved crosswalk. Perhaps pick these two crosswalks and perhaps even try a different approach for each. And then over the next year or so, see which one works best. It 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 might not be a good idea, as I think about it, to replace all the crosswalks, especially if we're considering a kind of an experimental approach. This might be an opportunity to try two different types of crosswalks that we think might be effective and then assess that in a year.
Yeah, I would say that I I would love to see the sidewalk and the crosswalks be part of the project and that I don't it would necessarily be replacing or addressing all the crosswalks in the same way. But it might be great to see how we might address as many crosswalks as we can, you know, in the best way possible, maybe create two major crossing points in town and then, you know, have these sort of ancillary crossing points that are addressed differently. I would love to see a broader scope possible within this kind of $350,000.
Okay, that sounds good. And then I I will also add that this is a federal grant and it does require 20% match. However, Dr. Cox does reserve the right to kind of move the funds around. And if it turns out that they could move Netherlands funds around if we're awarded the grant and be able to apply state multimodal dollars as our match, they may be able to. But they're really only focusing on region one to be able to do that. So we're a little bit outside the their sort of boundaries for making those exceptions. But that doesn't mean it couldn't happen. So and I'm always trying to push for Netherlands.
Well, right. And in the time of COVID, everybody in region one is actually in region four.
Right. That's the point, right?
All right. You have enough direction from us, Chris?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. And yeah, we look forward to the grant proposal and best of luck.
Oh, thank you.
All right, back to the program with the second discussion item. The owner's project requirement draft.
Yes. So again, as I mentioned earlier, I've been talking about this project for over a year. I'm moving along through Netherlands planning process. And I've been talking to the various advisory boards, the DDA. Well, I talked to the DDA initially to get the funding. I haven't brought the LPR to them yet. I was going to after this meeting. But I have talked to ProSab, SAP, I received the score from SAP. And then also the planning commission and gathered feedback. I put it into the document in front of you tonight. And I'm looking for feedback on it to kind of get to the finish line of approval by the BOT and be able to release it to JVA to integrate into their design. That's it.
All right. Questions from the board? Work, I'll randomly select this time. Julian?
It looked to be well constructed and I felt pretty comfortable with it.
Lindsay?
Yeah, it looks good to me.
Tanya?
Yeah, it's fine. I'm just confused. How is this different from what we just, not the, not the new project, but the thing we did the a minute before that?
So the OPR helps establish Netherlands sort of values into a project. So the tip project will be what's the word, constrained to 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 follow CDO's rules. However, there is some flexibility in how we can incorporate sustainability or other other things that Netherlands feels important in a sidewalk. And so that's the difference, really, whether it's materials or or colors, rain gardens, better stormwater mitigation, those are types of things you can add into a project and be able to still satisfy the the criteria of a multimodal sidewalk.
Okay, thanks.
And I know we've had OPRs on most of the big projects in town, so I'm assuming this this one has kind of grown out of lessons we've learned from the previous OPRs?
Yeah, yeah, it sure is.
Yeah. All right, Eric?
I I only had one question was that I didn't quite understand, under the planning commission's recommendations, the support for a change in traffic flow to accommodate more parking. And I was wondering how that applies to this project and what that actually means.
Yeah. So one of the things that they talked about was potentially or looking at potentially eliminating two-way traffic on Jefferson Street because it's congested and possibly having it one way to have more room for for parking. And then again, on First Street, I guess it'd be West First Street. There's a potential there to change the flow of traffic as well, so that traffic is only going in one direction. Maybe to the west. I haven't really, that's something I would leave up to to various decision makers to decide, but we can present those options. And again, it would illuminate. I think we've all experienced the leaving the visitor center parking lot and trying to go either north or south, it doesn't really matter, and get all congested and goofed up over there. And by eliminating the number of cars that have to navigate that could be beneficial. Then on West First Street, there the right of ways is pretty big there. And so the parking on the south side of the road really could be parking. You know, right now it's parallel parking for residents and a couple of businesses there. But there is a potential to make that perpendicular parking all the way down the street if Netherlands reclaimed that that right of way. So those are just some ideas. And I think that's what the planning commission was thinking as well, because one of their recommendations was for this project, don't lose any parking. So whatever the sidewalk takes, if it takes the parking space, make sure we add one somewhere else. So that that was kind of their requirement.
Cool. Yeah, I guess I didn't, I didn't think about how that how this project might play into that. That's actually pretty cool.
All right, Alan?
I I like the project. I think it looks good. And my only question is, well, I guess my, I guess I think I know the answers. You need to get DDA approval before you can get thumbs up from us or?
Yeah, I want to bring the drafts before the DDA and get any input, any final input from them that they would like to incorporate into the project. And and then whatever I feedback I get from you guys tonight, I'll make a final draft and bring it back.
Okay. So it would be premature to move it up to an action item and pass it?
A little bit, yeah. As much as I'd like to move it along quickly, I do need to bring it before the DDA first.
Sounds good. Anyway, I think it looks good and I appreciate all the work on it.
Thank you.
Julian, yep, we we thought everyone, yeah, this is actually, it was in this OPR that I was seeing the the good visuals of the crosswalks that I would love to see as part of the previous C dot project, the nice raised crosswalk, I think would be a great addition, but anyone from the public like to speak on this item or to give comment on?
Yes, I would like to. Hello?
Mitchell, please.
I think this is a great project and adding parking. I have done a lot of study on backend parking. And I would like that to be a consideration. It's probably a surprise to a few people. But there's tremendous additional safety added by having backend parking. I am pleased with the way it's worked with the six spots in front of Salto. And I think that this is something that, again, as someone mentioned, try something, you can always change it. But if you do it and you start with it and you monitor, see what happens. Sometimes I think there's such a fear to try something new like this that it doesn't get put into the package to start with. And I would very much like to see that as one of the items. And I think it'll sell well. At least I hope so. Thank you.
Just, you know, that was Ron Mitchell. Just reminder, name and whether you're a town resident or not during public comment.
Ron Mitchell, town resident.
Thank you, Ron. Any other member of the public like to speak on this one? I'm not seeing or hearing any. So we'll bring it back to the board. I think you had some input from us, Chris. Looks really great as a draft. I look forward to seeing what the DDA thinks about it and having you bring it back before us in the very near future.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, board.
All right. Oh, okay, I am going to quit sharing my screen now and pass it to Miranda. We are entering into the continued discussion regarding utility field fees billing. And our town staff has put together a presentation.
I just want to confirm that you can see the presentation. Can you see that?
We can see it.
Great. Great. So today we're here to talk about equity in utility billing. And staff has put together a PowerPoint to try to add to the information that has already been included in the agenda items. So first of all, we want to applaud the BOT for seeking equity in fee structure. This has been something that the previous BOT also talked about. And they were the ones who said they didn't feel like they could make a decision without doing the rate study. So it's because they approved going forward with the rate study and then staff, of course, applied for and received matching grants through DOLA. That's why we're doing the rate study and that's why we're also doing the master infrastructure plan update. Because that will provide you all with a lot of great information as you look at all of the fee structure holistically. And right now, the fee structure is called out in the Netherlands municipal code in chapter 13. So one of the questions you asked of the staff is how can you make changes to the current fee structure? So because the water and wastewater fees are addressed specifically in the code, that requires an ordinance to make changes. As we all know, you all set the policies and you all are empowered to change the code. Ordinances involving changes to code require a 15-day public notice. And once adopted, they go into effect in 30 days. Emergency ordinances can be adopted without the 50-day public notice. And those require six out of seven affirmative votes. And then those would go into effect immediately. To temporarily suspend any of the fees called out in code, let's say you decided to do a short-term solution, solution. If you have some serious concerns, you could do so waiting for the rate study, but you would still need to adopt an ordinance to activate the suspension. So can you make permanent changes to the code? Yes, of course. Just as I I said earlier, there's a way to do it through an ordinance. Those involve a public hearing. That's why it has to be publicly noticed for 15 days prior. But as you all discussed at the last meeting and staff agrees, there is a good reason to wait to make any permanent changes until after the rate study and the master infrastructure plan is done. Because we would be leveraging the expertise of our identified partners, JVA in Ratpolis. As an alternative, though, you could consider temporarily suspending, you know, whichever fees are causing you the most concern in order to have more equity and potentially to encourage and reward conservation if you wait until after the rate study is done. That could lead you to, like I said, a more holistic, comprehensive review of all the fees. And you could look at both increasing equity and potentially encouraging and rewarding conservation. You also asked staff about the financial impact to changes to the fee structure. So we were asked to quantify the result from making changes to the fee structure. You talked about lots of different scenarios in your last meeting, so we didn't address or focus on any one scenario. So that's why we provided the impact, the financial impact in several different scenarios. So you could see what what would be the impact if the base fees were eliminated or temporarily suspended. In the memo and the attachment that we provided in the packet, we included data showing the dates when second or multiple base fees were put in place specific to each commercial or residential property. In the last discussion, you all considered when second use fees In the last discussion, uh, you all considered when second use fees should be implemented. And what came up was. Uh, second addresses or a second meter. The second use fees that appear to cause the most concern with the BOT are related to primary residence. So, so that's the data that I included in this next slide. Now, the, the aim and the attachment includes a lot more data. But just based on what staff has heard. That seems to be the fee that's causing the most concern. So in this next slide. You'll see, and of course, this is in the packet as well. We called out the uh, single family residences. We of course, remove the addresses. This is a mix of long term and short term rentals. You can see at the very end, the last column list when these uh, went into effect. So the impact. If you were to suspend these fees. Would be eleven thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars annually. On the next slide. I just uh, kind of highlight. What this slide, some of the, the bullet points from this slide. So in code. Dwelling. I am. Single felt family dwelling means a detached principal building other than a mobile home. Designed for or used as a dwelling exclusively by one family. As an independent living unit. So that is how staff then was looking at when does it shift out of a one use? So as you can see in the previous slide, the majority of the second base fees were initiated years ago. Ten of the residences were identified as more than one use prior to twenty thirteen. One was identified in twenty fifteen, five in twenty eighteen. One in twenty nineteen, and then five. Were identified in twenty twenty. And as I said earlier, this is a mixture of long term and short term rentals. And these second base fees. For single family residences generate eleven thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars annually. On the next slide. We call out how are these second uses identified in primary residences? So there's lots of different ways that these have come to the attention of the utility billings team. Uh, one is through building permit process where the property owner identifies a second use. Requests to reprogram meters due to a second use. Meter upgrades. And then sometimes second users will actually request uh, from our utility team. A fee relief through the town's rate reduction program. So then that, that alerts the utilities team that, hey, there's, there's a second use here. Census data confirms two uses. Historic knowledge of long term rental or short term rental use. Observations and or complaints by neighbors. Observations by Safe Built. Numbers of cars parked in the driveway over an extended period of time. Requests for additional town service and ads for spaces for rent. So that's some of the ways that these. Primary residences have been identified as having a second use. So we see ourselves as partners to you as elected officials and your staff is here as a resource. We want to help you navigate through this important conversation. We recognize that the policy in the code is set by the Board of Trustees. We as town staff are responsible for implementing these policies and code, which in some cases. Were determined by elected officials many years ago. So let us know if there's anything else we can provide, any other uh. Research or data to assist you in this process. And let us know if you have any questions. And we really do want to just get out of the way now and let you all have this conversation.
Thank you, Karen. Uh, Miranda, don't stop sharing. If we want to refer back to this, I may just have you cycle back to slides as needed.
Well done.
All right. Uh, so let's uh, bring this to the board for discussion. Um. Who would like to lead us off on this one? Thoughts? Looks like Eric, you just popped up.
I did. I do have a question. I mean, I am, I'm, I find the uh, idea. Of. You know, maybe perhaps drafting and attempting to pass an emergency ordinance to uh. Suspend the collection of these base fees for the single family homes and lose that eleven thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars. I find that very compelling. Um, and what I would like to know is. Whether or not using that eleven thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars in staff's estimation is going to. You know, significantly or adversely impact our ability to provide water to the town. That is my main question. Or, or put the town in any kind of significant economic debt. Eleven thousand doesn't seem significant to me off the top like right away. So I, I'd just like to know staff's opinion on that.
You know, with uh, COVID and everything, it's not, it's not exactly the best time to be cutting back on revenues. That being said, when you just look at the amount of staff time that we're putting in things like researching this for you all and. And where we continue to have these conversations during the board meetings and your time is all valuable as well. That's why we tried to just call out what is the thing that seems to be causing the most concern? And then what would be the financial impact? Now, the reality is, let's say you did do an emergency ordinance and you suspended the fees. And you, uh, because it takes thirty days to go into effect. Probably the soonest you could do, and you'd have to word the ordinance in this way. Where it would state that you wouldn't bill anymore for it, which means. Uh, that would be the, the third and fourth quarter of this year. So that's six months. And then if we go into the first quarter. And we can get the rate study done and you guys can really, you know, have the information you need to make a more comprehensive holistic. Uh, revisions to the fee structure. For all the different reasons you want to. Um, that would be about nine months. And because it's split between two years, that definitely makes it easier. And um. You know. I, 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 I think we're, I think we're comfortable enough with it. To, to present it as an option.
Okay, yeah, when I talk, I talked to Miranda yesterday, you know, I did, I sort of had a gut feeling that it would be eight to twelve months. Um, I do feel like. Maybe there could be a way to draft an ordinance such that. Uh, it becomes kind of null and void once something new is passed. But I guess that could be done. Uh, when we, when we amend town code after the rate study anyway. So. I, I feel like to be, to be safe in case for, for whatever reason, we take longer, it's delayed. That we should potentially uh, count on a twelve month. If, if we were to do this, right, that we count on it being twelve months and operate accordingly, but you know, hope that it's nine. Uh, I, I don't know if that makes sense to, to approach it that way.
That's, that's where we're coming from.
Anyone else? Thoughts?
Yes, I have a thought. Go ahead, Alan.
Yeah, I just have a question, and that is uh. Is there an appeal process? We had several people who were just. Put into this program this year. That's caused. Consternation by at least a couple of people. And I don't feel it's fair to them in particular. And I guess my question is, is. Is there an appeal process for them? And has anybody, it looks like we have quite a few people already designated in this program. That perhaps haven't objected some, um, that's my question.
So we're aware of three um. Three uh, customers who are not happy um, with being added to this. And there definitely could be an appeal process that we go through instead. And look at, but, but I guess, I guess the thing is, is. We would need direction from the board. When we go back and look at the code. It, you know, as, as Tanya Corvalon has pointed out before, some of the, the, the things that. Make it. Pipped into a second use, would you still want us to be using that criteria because it's in the code? Because if we are, then it really doesn't make much sense to do it. Um. I don't know. I, I guess. That's just my feedback. We could certainly approach those folks, talk to them. See if, if uh, maybe we've made a mistake on our end. The only thing is, are we still being held to the exact language in the code? Because I think there might be maybe one that makes a difference, but I don't know about the other two.
Yeah, I think the, I think it's worth a conversation with the people, the, the three people that feel it's unfair. And uh. Give us uh, some feedback in terms of. How you think stack, that stacks up. To me, you know, Tanya brought this up previously another as well. Is the bottom line is. Are these people using an extraordinary? Amount of water, you know, something out of the ordinary. Uh, we don't, what's the one piece of data we don't have is. How do these places stack up in terms of actual water usage? And I know maybe that it's just not easy to get at, you know. How do they compare to the average? Are they in fact using? An extraordinary amount of water compared to your average? Which would justify.
Who's volunteer is that? Um, part of the data that uh, is going to be considered in the rate study?
Typically, who's using more water?
Uh, like what duplexes and, and uh, multi-use and um, long-term renters and that sort of thing. Is that going to be looked at, analyzed to show how much those folks are actually using in water?
It could be, I'm not sure.
Maybe that's something we can ask them to. To report on.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's important information. Because well, you know, what we really want to achieve is a system that. Rewards conservation people using less water. And. Recovers more costs from those that use more water because that's driving. Costs for the community overall. It's going to mean. You know, broadening facilities and. Causing more expense for everyone. If there are some individuals using more, and I think that's kind of where you were coming from. Years ago when this was created was, you know, here's some place. They're putting more strain on the. And we need to make sure we're going to have enough. To cover that cost of expansion.
Yeah, the, the, I, while I completely agree that those should be our goals, sorry, this is just. I think that we can achieve that. Um, after the rate study, when we uh, sort all this out and really. Drive that equity and conservation as kind of concurrent goals. For the way that we, that we set future rates, but in this particular case, it does feel like there are. Uh, there's just. It doesn't feel like it could possibly be, you know, guaranteed that these places would use more water. And we're essentially charging them based on the potential for use rather than. The actual use, and I can see why that feels deeply unfair uh, to those folks and. Just, it does seem to me. That um, the way that code is written is not the best way that it could have been written, uh, that we can. Uh, do, do better on that and that for the sake of, especially in COVID, um, you know, for the sake of. Uh, you know, the well-being of the folks who are negatively affected by, I think is not, not. Uh, the best written code, we could say as a town. At eleven thousand three hundred and fifty-two, ideally less, right? Because it's going to be nine months, not twelve. Uh, but we could kind of eat that cost in the name of equity and fairness, uh, and then. Really sort this out at the, at the end of the rate study. And I'm, I'm leaning in that direction quite strongly myself. And um, I, I do wonder how other trustees are feeling on this.
This is Chris. Um, for one thing, I mean, if we say we're going to quote unquote eat that cost, what that's really meaning is the rest of the users are going to pay that cost. Everyone else in town is going to subsidize that. Those second uses where people have, I mean, a number of these, Miranda, can you go back to, I think it's slide six? It doesn't say what, yeah, some of, you know, these things that are, you know, actually one of those has three uses. Um. Number of these are short-term rentals. These are people with additional rental units. They are. You know, in some cases, commercial enterprises that were then saying that the town is going to subsidize their commercial enterprise. And so the, the equity and fairness question goes both ways. Uh, we're asking the rest of the town to help these people. Have a, a short-term rental in their, in their basement or backyard or whatever. So. Just wanted to bring up, it goes both ways. If we say, when we say we eat it, it's not the town, it's all the other users that have to pay for that.
Right, I was, I guess, understanding from this document that these would be single family residences.
These are, these, these are single family residences, but some of them have converted. I, I mean, some of them a long time ago into like maybe turn their basement into a long-term rental, for instance. So.
So those people with long-term rentals, are they getting two water bills?
No. Some are, the ones who we've identified through the various ways that we showed you. Those people are.
Uh huh. So they are, they're, they have two uses in the system, so. Two base fees and two usage fees. Uh, is appropriate for those individuals.
Yes. Yeah, so that's the hard thing about this is. You know, it, it, some of them, the, the most recent ones, I think, are the short-term rentals. But some of these that have been around for a long time, they're known to have long-term rentals in their. You know, like I said, the basement or wherever. And so how do we treat that? Are we just going to treat everybody the same if you're a single family residence? And you're getting two base fees, then would we just treat everybody the same just for simplicity's sake? Um, or do you, you, you know, would you want us to handle it a different way?
Yeah, I, I think that that's the trouble here is that. With the way things are currently written has led to maybe some people being appropriately charged. But other people being inappropriately charged, which I actually, I don't think that that balanced itself out, right? Like the people who might be. Charged are, um, are the ones who are essentially. Bring at the end of the day. And I think that maybe the mistake. Has, has already been made. And in order to rectify it. Uh, we, I, I mean, I guess if it were possible to do some kind of investigation of all of these different places and see. Who's has long-term rentals in the basement or whatever. I, I know that sounds. That sounds crazy to me. I'm not sure that that's the, the direction that we want to pursue. I guess what I'm saying is that. Um, we would, we would not be subsidizing these uh. Any kind of enterprise for very long. And the side effect of it, or what I think of as the primary effect would be that we uh. Provide some relief for the folks who might not be fairly charged here.
I, I would like to jump in. I can't unmute.
We can hear you.
Oh. Weird, because on my, okay, so um. I want to first thank Miranda and Karen for this great. Spreadsheets and information, because it's, it's really good to see it all like this.
And Chris, Chris put a lot of this together too.
I couldn't, oh, thank you, Chris. Um, thank you all. So um, I want to also go first to what Alan was saying. About how the rate studies should definitely show us who is using more water. So that we can then create an equitable way of charging the people who use more water. Um, I feel like when we're talking about making up with this, making up this revenue, this eleven, twelve thousand dollars and how we're going to have to. Spread it on other people and all these. I, and how it is now, it's going to be unfair to them that they're going to pay. An extra forty cents a month. And that's not even in stone that we should do it that way, but um. I want people to realize that we're charging people based on a code. That doesn't really reflect water use. So. The revenue really shouldn't have been generated for most of these houses. They're not really using more water. So we shouldn't. Be saying, oh, they're going to, they're getting off now when they've, they've actually been. Carrying the burden. carrying the burden of a poorly written code and the town's been making money in a, in a situation where they probably shouldn't have been charging them in the first place, so. That's why we want to rewrite the code and while I would be happy to do it today, I think it's wise to just do an ordinance to suspend these charges until the rate study comes out. And then we can look and see who are the people using more water? And is this really equitable? Is this system that we've designed based on having a two entrances to your house, does that really determine how much water you're using? How many times are you going to flush the toilet? And I think we'll find out after the rate study if this code is worth rewriting or not. And I think we could easily make up the eleven thousand dollars by finding people who use more water and charging them an extra dollar a month, two dollars, I mean, it doesn't look like much. Forty cents a month in water extra and a dollar fifty or whatever in sewer a month. Extra spread across would make that up, so. In my opinion, it's not that, that much money. And we should relieve these people of carrying a burden of a poorly written code. I also think that when we're looking at the budget of the water department, a lot of us don't remember, but I do, because I've been here a long time, when our water bill was one quarter of what it is now, and it wasn't that long ago. It's probably fifteen years ago and so, I mean, we're talking four times where I'm paying a quarter from what I used to. And so it's surprising to me that with that much more extra revenue, that many more homes that are now paying into the system, that we're still not profiting off this or at least breaking even. So I would think energy should be spent figuring out why that's happening. And less energy spent on charging people who have two doors to come in their house or have a long-term runner in their basement. Doesn't necessarily use any more water than a family of six or five or four. Or someone with a garden or, so that, that's my five, six cents in the, in the picture, I am in favor of drafting an ordinance to suspend these charges for the single-family residences, not for people who already have two base fees or already have two water bills. That's different, I'm talking about people who don't have those, that criteria. They should be relieved of this burden and I don't think we should view it as they're getting away now with this ability to have an in-law house or have a basement rec room or a, I mean, the way it's written, I, anybody could be charged this just by having a wet bar in their basement and a door that goes to it from the outside, so. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Tanya? Other trustees?
This is Julian. Karen, is it likely changing our?
I'm sorry, Julian, you were going in and out, can you repeat it?
Yeah, what's the likelihood that the rate study is going to require us to change our code? Rather than just the fees?
Well, the, it's, the rate study will give you some different scenarios. You know, it could show us, you know, if we just stay on the path we're currently on. And we're just going to increase the fees, that's one way to do it. It could also, and, and because you guys have given our consultants' feedback, they know that this is a concern you guys have. You know, a concern about being equitable as well as a concern about advancing, promoting conservation and water use and then rewarding people. So based on that feedback, I'm guessing that it's going to also include ideas of ways to implement programs like that.
Okay, when we keep going on about the base rate being associated with how much water is being used. And yet, that is not what the code says, the code says that the base rate is an access fee. The access fee means it doesn't matter how much water is going through, the access fee is covering the health of that pipe and the infrastructure behind it that is attached to that residence.
That's correct, yes.
Are we sticking with the claim that that load is affected by use?
That's the question.
No, I'm asking you, are we claiming that that load is affected by use? Because if we're not, we have a completely different discussion and this current discussion has been going off into the weeds.
Well, I'm, I, I, are you asking me to defend the decision that was made by a group of trustees prior to my coming on?
No, I'm actually asking, even in the current analysis, we have an indication, we have a sentence indicating that the base fee is there to cover use. And I'm claiming it is not, and we need to stop saying that.
Well.
Are we claiming that the base fee is covered, is, is affected, but must be affected by use?
No.
Good, all right, then let's set that aside for now. I'm, I have a question. The, the base fee, I, I'm claiming the base fee is a lease. Now, if nobody else thinks that's a lease, what would be a good word to use for what the base fee is?
Well, this is, my best analogy on this that I always see is going back to the, the car analogy that came out earlier where the base fee is the registration you, the registration you pay the state to get your license plate. The usage fee that we charge is then what you pay in gasoline. So if you don't pay your car very much, you don't spend on a lot on gasoline, but you still have to pay for access to the roads through your registration.
I'm all for that, that's a fine way, it allows us to keep our car analogy, that's fine, so.
Right, and so you have, you have a lot of, you have houses out there where they, a, you know, a person may, a whole family of six may have only one car. But drive around a lot, or you may have somebody who has five cars and drives each one a little, but that means they still have to pay the five registration fees.
Absolutely, all right, I, I'm, I'm with you on that, that's fine. So. I think i- in my view, the original questions revolved around the meaning of the word use. And how difficult it was to apply any of the meanings of the word use to the question of, is that pipe lying idle in the ground under pressure and the infrastructure behind it affected by multiple uses? And I'm claiming it is not. And I'm claiming that the key problem we have is that we are associating that base fee with use. The usage fee is of course affected by use, but we don't have to know what uses are there, we see it because they're using the water. But the base fee, I'm claiming, is not affected by use. It's for that reason that I proposed a revenue-neutral option wherein we say this is tied to the address and not to the use. That would reduce our income, but not anywhere near as much as the current analysis, which is why the current analysis is problematic. The notion that we have one tap going to Tunston Village and we're only going to charge one base fee for that tap, that is, that's a loser and that's what we're talking about here, that is what this entire description is. Rather than saying we have a tap and we have twenty-six addresses and each of those addresses is going to pay a base fee and that base fee is the title to that tap. Now, my concern is that it would have been so, so useful to have actual numbers associated, not with the worst-case scenario, but with a scenario that could have been considered, that, that could have become fairly revenue-neutral. We are considering addresses in which we're not losing that much money. So we've seen the worst-case scenario. The, we're not seeing a scenario that could be revenue-neutral. And a scenario that could also be proposed to ref tell us specifically, so they could provide us an analysis of that exact wording to the code. Responsibly, I, I'm done talking for.
Yeah, so are we saying that these twenty-two units that have been put in this, put together in this presentation here, are these twenty-two, I don't know what to call them, you know, residential, single-family whatever's, because we apparently, we, our definitions are so skewed here, we don't even know what to call these things anymore.
Important part of a document.
But are we, are we saying that some of these have multiple addresses?
No, I, I, we typically listened to what you all said, and that's what I said in the beginning of the presentation, which is what we heard you say is that if there's a second meter or a second address, you weren't concerned about the base fees. So we only called up the single-family residences with two base fees. So the information we're providing you tonight and what you've been talking about with the eleven thousand dollars is only one address and only one meter, and that's the eleven thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars.
You're claiming Tunston Village is only one address?
No, 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 I don't know where you're getting that, Julian. I, I, I have tried so hard to clarify this with you over the last four days. Clearly, I'm being an extremely poor communicator with you. That is not at all what was said. We gave in the data, we showed you all the, the multiple base fees, all, all of them, commercial, residential, multifamily. So you could look at everything. None of us said you should only charge Tunston Village one base fee, nobody has said that.
And yet, you're saying that in these cases where we see two uses, are those cases where this is listing two uses, also two addresses?
Not, not in the, no, not in the single-family residences.
Everything on the screen right now has only one address. Per account number.
And one meter, right?
And one meter, yeah, that's why we called this out, Julian. I, I'm, I don't know why.
Karen, it's okay.
Karen, it's because the list that was provided by, in the original document showed lists exactly like this, but included an entry that had twenty-six uses.
That was simply providing you with all the information we were asked to give.
That was a different list.
Yeah, we were asked to provide information about the financial impact of, of the second and multiple base fees. We were not.
Okay, go ahead.
We were not trying to tell you how to do anything. The only thing that we've recommended is to wait to make any permanent changes to code until after the rate study is done. And that an option, if you are concerned about fairness of single-family residences with two base fees is to suspend those charges for now. And then the last thing we said is if you want to, you could spread out that cost to everyone as, as trustee Corvilon had mentioned. So that's, we're just providing you with data. And maybe we hear wrong, but.
Let me ask about a specific account. Let me ask about account number seventeen forty, which has twenty-six uses.
That's not on the screen.
I know it's not on the screen.
One of the single-family residences.
The data that was used to compile these numbers. I'm not looking at what's on the screen, I'm looking at the original presentation. In which account number seventeen forty with twenty-six uses was indicated as an account that would pay one base fee. What is that account? Is that not Tunston Village?
I'm going to let Chris answer that question, Chris Pelletier, he put the data together and I'm obviously not communicating well with you as to why we put that data together or why he included that. I just looked at it. We're trying to give you the best information you can and you guys go forward and make your decision. And to be mindful of how you.
Right. But that just does not play in at all to that eleven thousand three hundred and fifty-two, that's not related.
No, no, not at all.
It's on a totally different count.
Right, exactly.
It's really about being really mindful, if you do change code or you do change any definitions, just be really mindful of the potential impact that a change to code could have, again, I'm not saying how you should change code or anything. This is simply illustrating how the language in the code has been implemented. That's all that is.
So this is, we see on the screen now, the, the account that Julian is asking a question about, the seventeen forty, that's twenty-six. A, you know, quarterly revenue of around forty-four hundred dollars. This is all the multi-dwellings, you know, obviously we have nine uses for, et cetera, and that's fifteen thousand dollars per quarter for these units. If Miranda scrolls up one page, this is the table we were just looking at in the PowerPoint, these are the problematic twenty-two. These are the ones where we have a quarterly revenue for uses above a single base fee, twenty-eight hundred per quarter, which over the course of the year brings us to that eleven thousand number that has been going around. So it is just these twenty, was it, what'd you say, Eric, twenty-two account numbers? That are playing into the eleven thousand that are single-family residences with a single address with more than one uses, hence more than one base fee for water sewer of both. So the proposals that are being kicked around by the board, by some members of the Board of Trustees are suspension of, and I, this is where I would actually want some clarification from those who are looking at the suspension. Are they asking for a suspension of all ancillary base fees, so that each one of these would then drop to a single base fee? For the next, I think Eric said, or Eric seems to have gone, I got a red triangle, he seems to have lost his internet connection. For the next year while waiting on the rate study to do a more permanent. That seems to be what I've heard from Eric and Tanya, being a suspension of additional base fee charges on just these twenty-two accounts for the next year. Which would have a financial impact to the town of eleven thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars.
That is exactly, that is exactly what I was proposing based on that understanding of this information, and I also just want to point out once again that it is likely that we will not even lose the full eleven thousand because we could have this done in nine months.
Yeah, we all, I always like to plan for worst case, especially in town budgets.
Abs- absolutely, I just, I, I think that eleven thousand is what we need to plan for, but that it's not a guaranteed loss necessarily.
Okay.
Is that thing us all on the same page, Julian?
Sorry.
My, my problem with this is that these numbers comported with my worst-case scenario, given the tables provided. And now we're saying it's my worst-case scenario with only those twenty-two users and that's not what I got from my calculations, so I need to review my calculations, perhaps I am wrong. Nonetheless, I, I am not in favor of suspending the base fee because I think the base fee makes good sense. But I mean, the problem is if we're not going to change the code, we're stuck with this and we have to do something extreme, and I'm not sure we need to do something extreme. But, okay, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm I, I, I'm, I'm not at all satisfied that we should simply suspend that base fee because I think the base fee makes sense. It's just not defined well.
Well, I think, yeah, one of the things that hasn't really been broached, it was mentioned earlier this evening briefly and I'm going to go real quickly here, because I was over talking to somebody a minute ago, I think it was Lindsay. I want to make sure to give other people a chance here, but was the idea of a appeals process. Because as was pointed out, this is not something new, this has been, except for a small number of accounts that took, that came into a compliance on January first. This has been something that's been in the works for a while, this has been part of town code long before I think any of us were on the board, myself included. So I would like to like maybe broach the idea of some kind of appeals process and what that might look like as an alternative to any kind of emergency. Certainly no emergency code changes. I'm definitely not a fan of that. But in terms of, even in terms of suspension, where we might be able to target the need, the, the places where it's a problem more accurately. That's it. I think somebody else was trying to talk.
Yeah, this is trustee Danforth, and, and you got to that idea before I had a chance to, to talk about it as well because I, I'm certainly falling in between Eric's idea and Julian's. And I don't want to make any kind of sweeping changes before we have the rate study. And it does seem that there's a few people who do feel that they're not being charged appropriately. And I would like to give them the opportunity to have an appeals process for that. So instead of just automatically wiping it out for these, these accounts here, I, I don't know if that opens us up to any other accounts kind of saying that if, if we remove the, if we bend the rules for these few by defining use differently for them, if that's going to open up any issues with other accounts saying, you know, that we've defined their uses improperly. So I think what I'd like to do is just give an appeals process to the, to these accounts, the, the single-family accounts with the two base fees, and allow them to, to work with us and, and have it removed or suspended temporarily until we have a, that rate study and can make better decisions about our, our fee structures.
Lindsay, are you suggesting we waive the three, three or four people who have been complaining? Their, their, their second base fee? Because if, unless we change the code, they are being correctly charged because they all might have an extra entrance or they might have something that accounts for why they're being charged in the code, but they don't have a second address or a second water meter. And many of them are short-term rentals and they should be, they could be absorbed by it simply by the, the whole reason why hotels don't get charged it. So I guess that could be the loophole for some of them. But you're saying the people who complain should just get waived?
No, I'm saying that they should appeal. And while they're technically under an appeals process, it can be suspended until the code is revised.
Right. I mean, if you go through an appeal, unless we change the code, most likely, unless there, it's going to come back as, well, you have a second door to your downstairs that can seal off from the upstairs. So it's still technically would be a violation and would be a reason to do a second charge. So how do you get around that?
I mean, that's where I'm, I'm not sure what, what all our options are if we decide to, to go down the appeals process. Because certainly I don't want to make anything unfair to anybody else. But I think that's where I'm going to have to defer to town staff as to what would happen in an appeals process and is that considered an unfair practice?
I'd like to mention one more thing before we go to town. And that's that if they are short-term rentals, people that are complaining, and I don't know if all of them are, some might be long-term rentals, but a short-term rental based on the reason that a hotel doesn't get charged a second base fee should not be getting charged one. And how does town staff feel about that? That if a hotel doesn't get charged a second base fee, why are the short-term rental charged a base fee? That's my question to town.
Well, I would, I would chime in there that a hotel is charged commercial rates and everything on a commercial basis, not residential, which is already, well, for starters, a lot more expensive. So that's one.
In the code, it says multi-units are based on people living there. So if nobody's living in a space and it's empty 60% of the time, or then it's not, if you're going to go by the code, then it can't be charged because no one's living there. Now, long-term rentals would then still be charged, but, well, you know where I stand. I think we should suspend, we should do an ordinance to suspend until we get the rate study.
And then what do we do to make up the, the loss?
Well, I mean, it's not that much money.
I, I'm at the top. Why the approach that we're considering is one that involves simply suspending the base fee when were we to look at the code more carefully and simply craft it so that we develop a revenue neutral solution, then we can turn to that.
I love that too.
What we want to do, this is what we want to do. We're wanting to charge by, I don't know, I proposed address, maybe there's something else we should do. But if.
No, I like what you said, Julian.
I, I am in favor, thank you, Tanya. I, I'm just saying, I'm in favor of, I don't think there is any reason to wait for the Raftellus study in order to correct what appears to be clearly a faulty piece of code, a piece of code that could be corrected to address what that fee actually is as opposed to a fee that's tied to use. Instead, turn the base fee through code, I, I propose some wording, I'd be happy to see anybody else's wording, through code so that, and, and the code that I proposed would not charge money to these addresses that have two uses. It would reduce them from one base fee or from two base fees to one base fee. Then we make up for that by upping the base fee or by upping the usage fee. And I liked Chris's suggestion that we split the difference, make it part base fee increase and part usage fee increase. Go through that process and then when Raftellus comes back and says, here are the fees you need to be charging, I don't think we necessarily need to change the code. We're looking at a code that we feel is shaky. Let's fix that code because it's shaky, not because people are complaining about paying too much of a base fee. Tanya, you have. I would have seen, I would have liked to have seen code, to seen numbers that covered that proposal. So this proposal that is being presented by staff is that these people who are paying two base fees now pay no base fees. I don't think that was proposed anywhere in the last.
No, no, they're being, they're proposing that they are, those who are on this page right now who are paying two or in one case, three base fees, paying one base fee.
Okay, that was not, I, I, I was misreading this.
If you scroll up, if Miranda scrolls up just the, the headings of this table, quarterly revenue above, revenue for uses above one. So that, then you scroll down again, I wish this all fit on one screen. That gives us the 2,800 per quarter or 11,000 per year for uses above one.
And for the record, man, I like your idea.
So what we're seeing on the screen and what was put together by town staff is what they're asked to do in terms of reducing those single-family homes or single-family residents paying multiple base fees to a single base fee and what the financial impact of that would be on the water and sewer funds.
I like what Julian, I like what Julian wants to do. I would, that's the direction I would want to go. I was suggesting just suspending it as a means to kind of procrastinate the decision and to get more data so that the people who aren't convinced might become convinced. But I would definitely go right with Julian and say, let's do those changes Julian said. And with the vocabulary, very small change, and that would solve the problem also. Boom. But, so I would, that's the only reason I, I suggested the amendment and the suspension of the, more as a procrastination technique and a, a way to get more data so that maybe other people could be convinced. And that's all I'm going to say.
Alan, you want to weigh in? Do you have a, I've heard from everyone else, I just want to make sure everyone gets a chance to speak in here.
Well, I was the one that proposed the appeal process. And I still think that's a, that's a middle road to give the three people who feel they've been unfairly charged a process where they could talk to town staff, appeal the process, town staff will come back with us with information about those three particular cases to see if they were fairly assessed or not. I know that some people feel that they were fairly assessed based on inaccurate town code. So the appeal would be futile. But at least in those three particular cases, the fee could be suspended until that's resolved. And then we could have other options to look at with the rate information. But I, you know, I, I think Julian's argument is certainly legitimate as well. I guess I'm not in favor of an emergency ordinance. I think there's a better path than suspending all the fees, which I think many of which are justified.
That becomes the question then, like I, in, in the way that I read the town code myself, sorry, this trustee comes as my, I, I don't think that these fees are justified. And I sort of, I've never been presented with any compelling evidence that we should be charging base fees at all, to be honest. Like, I don't really understand what the cost actually is that they are covering. We've been given sort of an abstract of it, but I don't, I've never really seen a number that says like, this is what we need to meet and this is what base fees need to meet. And if we are trying to approach this from a more equity and conservation standpoint, which I would like to do, and I think a few of us would, then I do think that we would kind of completely reevaluate maybe this base fee, use fee structure altogether potentially, depending on what the rate study said. So for those reasons, I'm, I, I'm not convinced by this idea that there's a lease on access and that, I'm not really sure that license plates are fair either, to be honest. That, that's a, that's the right way to, to register a car. So I'm, I, I remain unconvinced that this is a perfectly fine idea in principle. I don't think that it necessarily is. And for that reason, I would like to, to, to temporarily suspend these fees for these 22 people. I think that an appeals process is an additional bureaucratic layer that is completely unnecessary and everyone will appeal and everyone will have it suspended, right? I mean, that, that doesn't make sense to me either. I think that.
Let, let me see if I can persuade you. So let's imagine we have a building in Netherlands that is not occupied. A PIF fee was paid to put the pipe in, so the pipe is there and the resources have been reserved. No one is living in this place yet, or perhaps they were living there for a while and now they're not living there. And the pipe that's going to their house that has a tap that is under pressure is turned off, but it's still under pressure and it's rusting slowly and things go wrong. And you never know when you're going to have to do maintenance on that. The town, without a fee saying, I've got a lease on this, could easily say, you know, that pipe just burst. We're just going to seal it off. The base fee, in my view, is the owner of the residence saying, I own access to that pipe. I'm not using it, but I own access to that pipe. So here's this reasonably small fee saying, you guys remember I own access to that pipe and you can't get rid of it. I think that's what the base fee is for, and I think that is a fair use. I think that is a way of saying, I have a legal claim to use to that pipe and I'm paying a reasonable fee to keep it. That's what I think.
That makes sense.
Yep.
I can't see to unmute, sorry. What I was, sorry, I was just going to respond to that. What I was going to respond to that was that I do think that, that, that does make sense on the surface. I have, I'm not convinced that the base fee itself makes any sense, right? Like, like the number that the base fee is at, I'm not sure if that actually makes sense at all. I, I, it might, it might make perfect sense, but I just don't understand how we've come to these, to these numbers. And because we're doing this rate study, I feel like we might be put in a position where we want to radically alter code, depending on what Raftellus recommends in order to favor a more conservation-oriented approach rather than a potential bite, pipe bursting oriented approach.
I was on. Turned on my video, can you tell him serious?
Um, sorry. I was on the Board of Trustees the last time we had Raftellus do a rate study. And where we looked at, I believe there were three options for base rates for both water, what, we did for both water and sewer in the same way. So I'm just going to talk in one, in general. Three different options for base rates and usage rates to, that went for a sort of standard model all the way to a most stringently conservation-based model, which had, you know, base fees at a sort of a low, mid, high level or pricing, and then usage fees that kind of scaled appropriately to keep it all revenue neutral. And the most high, the conservation strongest one had the lowest base fee for all users. And then it had a ramped up version of usage where if you start using, I don't remember the exact numbers, so don't quote me, above 1,000 gallons a month, you pay an ultra premium. If you only use 1,000, you're paying much less. And the Board of Trustees had many hours of discussions and public meetings about which direction to go. And I believe we settled on the middle approach. And that's where these base rates got set, was deciding on a middle approach that split the difference between greater financial stability for the water and wastewater treatment systems and greatest conservation encouragement. And so that's exactly where those name, numbers came from. And we set then the yearly growth rate of three to 5%. It depended on the year that they've been meeting every year since. So that's where those base rate numbers came from, was a Raftellus study that we're now in the process of updating.
And I think that's important. And I understand what you're saying, Eric. You're saying, we got the base fee, but why is it this number? And I agree that it would be good to understand why it is that number, but we can't expect Raftellus to tell us why it is that number. Provide them with code verbiage that tells them how we are divvying these up. That's why I think it's important to modify the code simply because it needs to be cleaned up. And at that point, Raftellus can be making their calculations based upon code that we think makes sense. At which point they could say, oh, the base fee is too high, the base fee is too low, whatever. In the meanwhile, without changing code in a temporary way, we can adjust the fees through the process that Karen has described so that the base fee is perhaps slightly higher, the usage fee is slightly higher. We have fixed the code, we have a revenue neutral solution, and Raftellus comes back and says, here's what your numbers ought to be.
Yeah, I love it. I mean, you know, from the, from the very start here, you know, I did say that I think we should just change the code. And then a lot of discussion arose around the, the rate study and waiting for that to happen, which I didn't think that we should do. But if we are now in a place where we, we can change the code on principle, and I do think, I, I might think that we should put all the, 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 the increase in rates into usage rather than into the base fee. I mean, I would be interested in that as a potential solution, just because I think that does promote a more conservation kind of perspective for this upcoming year.
I think that would be a great discussion, and I think if we took these numbers that we've been presented as a worst-case scenario. Because as I say, my, my numbers were different from this and I'm using the same evidence, but nonetheless, let's, I'm, I'm going to just give up on that and say, let's go with this. This is our worst-case scenario. This is what the numbers are. We're going to use these numbers to make a decision. It strikes me that it is not a horrible burden on anybody to go ahead with this and convert from using the ill-defined use as a term in our use, in our base rate into using something that is more solid. And if I'm proposing address and town staff is wanting to do something different that gives us roughly the same value, that's fine. I'm not mentioning water meters. Perhaps water meters are a special case that town staff will want to recommend we bring in. But I've proposed wording and I, I would like staffs, I, I would like to see staff's view on that wording, unless we have other trustees who would like to propose very different wording. And, and I, that of course.
I, I read your wording and I think it looked great. And I actually just genuinely did not believe that there was an appetite on this board to change the code before the rate study was completed. But if that appetite exists, I would be all about doing it.
I think that would be more simple than doing a temporary thing.
Absolutely. Who wants to do temporary things? It's like the new option. I'd much rather just fix it.
Okay, so I, I see the three of you are all in favor of the, I'm going to summarize this here because we want to be able to give staff good direction. So correct me if I've got this wrong, but the three of you are interested in a proposal that would look at modifications to town code to eliminate the 22 problematic cases, reducing those to single-use billing within town code in a revenue. within town code in a revenue neutral manner, which, um, which, uh, wow, I'm already starting to lose words. Which, um, moves the, the cost across all other users within the system in some form of base and usage fee.
Yeah.
There, there is very specific wording that I have proposed and I think the wording is useful. As I said, I.
Yeah, I don't have that in front of me. Was, was that the wording in the code, the code changing wording or?
This was, this was in my, uh, attachment to the last BOT meeting. Let me see if I can find it. Cause I've, so.
I have it here.
I could read it too, if you'd like, Julian. This is Chris.
Thank you, Dave.
So, um.
This was for sewer.
If multiple taps are feeding one unit, they shall be assessed one base fee for each tap. If multiple taps are serving multiple units so as to make it impossible to determine which tap is applying to which unit.
You're using examples. Those aren't, those aren't my proposal. Those are my, the proposed wording was different and I apologize. I can't find.
I have it up, Julian, I believe, where you say I propose similar changes.
I believe that's what I remember, but.
Is this on the screen correct? Yeah.
Yes.
That's it.
Chris, you were going over the examples, but the examples are just subsequent to the wording. The wording which was uh, usage rate should be increased slightly. Oh wait, now I see where.
It's just above this. It's just above this. Scroll up a little bit. There it is. Changes to thirteen twenty-eight A one.
There we go. So, uh, sewer user fees shall consist of a monthly available service fee, base fee, which shall be assessed for each building or portion of a building unambiguously identified by an address, a unit and fed by a tap as well as for each additional tap which may be feeding that unit on the property with a three-quarter inch tap. Then I provide examples. If multiple taps are feeding one unit, they shall be assessed one base fee for each tap. If multiple taps are serving multiple units so as to make it impossible to determine which tap is applying to which unit, a single base fee shall be applied to each unit served by those taps. And there are other examples that were already there that were entirely adequate. That's my proposed wording.
I'll say though, that, that does beg the question of the definition of a unit. And then also the definition of a single family dwelling. And how do those two, um, correspond with each other?
Well, I used, I, I went ahead and used the word unit because unit was used in other examples and unit was not defined in those examples. So I was trying to be consistent with existing examples.
And one unit being.
Pardon, go ahead.
Can one unit be in a single family home? Can you have more than one unit in a single family home? And so that's where I'm thinking definitions really need to be clear if you guys are going to change code.
I agree. So if there are multiple families living at one address, I'm proposing they pay one base fee. Their usage fee will be higher, but there's one tap going to that address. And they're paying to keep that tap in place whether they're there or not, whether they're using it or not.
Okay. I'm just trying to think here, you know, I don't know if we're going to be able to really bash this out without, um, more, yeah, cause I think, you know, the, this idea of looking at what units, cause unit is defined within, uh, chapter 13 code. Um, and so we need to, what we need to do is we need to start, we need to go back into chapter 13. Look at what unit is defined as, you know, base fee, all these various definitions.
Okay.
And look at possible change, you know, these possible changes. Take Julian's draft changes that we see on the screen to thirteen twenty-eight. Um, and then a similar one for fifteen, thirteen fifty-eight for water, um, or sewer, whichever, water, um. I'd like to propose that we, we do that. We look at what that code change would look like. We start drafting it and Julian, you're going to have, probably have to be pretty integrally involved in this because it's your words and your ideas. Um, we do that. Look at what, uh, the code changes will be needed to make that happen. In addition, we look at the revenue side of it and the fee changes. What that would need to be done, what the impact of that will be, will be in terms of trying to keep it as revenue neutral as possible. Um, and we will, we should bring back to the board of trustees, proposed language change within the code, like red line code, red line, chapter 13 code. Um, so that we can see exactly what we're changing and all the, the associated definitions along with proposed fee changes and the, the financial analysis of that to the board, um. I'm trying to decide, I don't know if this is something we can get done in two weeks or is that something we should target for the first week in September? And if it is the first week in September that we think we can actually tackle this, then, well, hold on, hold on. Then we bring back a proposal at the next board meeting for temporary suspension of the problematic 22.
So.
So, so we don't feel the time pressure of needing to do this too quickly. Um, because, you know, trying to do quick code changes, the law of unintended consequences will bite us every single time and we'll discover that we've really burned ourselves if we try to rush this through in a very short amount of time. If we can do it in such a way that, uh, ideally, yeah, you know, that we do a careful analysis of all the implications of it. And, but in to do that and then provide relief for the, the problematic 22, we can do a uh, suspension of, yeah, for like one quarter or something, you know, so it's not the full impact. But lesser, you know, something to, you know, to work on. I'm just trying to figure out a way to move forward with this and plan to move forward.
We switched the problematic 22 to one base fee each.
Correct.
Okay.
But when?
To what this would do. Okay.
My, my proposal, Tanya, would be that we would want to draft, we'll have town staff and we'll try to figure out how to do that. Draft that so that we can implement it at the next board meeting. So that can happen more quickly while.
To do that temporarily while.
Temporary suspension will take as soon as possible. So as to not have the time pressure on our work on the code and base fee modifications. Because we don't want to be.
Quick stopgap for the whole thing. Okay. So next, next meeting, we could vote on that.
Next meeting, we'll, we'll address the temporary suspension or mitigation of fees. And also the plan for how to really tackle this. And we'll, we'll have a better idea, I think, at that point with the town code. And we will be able to see, is that something we can tackle within first meeting of September? Or is this something we're going to need to get input from bore, other boards and things like that before we really can dig into? And that gives us a way to move this process forward, um, in a way that is fair to everyone as po- as fair to everyone as possible.
Okay.
That's like a, Eric, I see your hand coming up.
Yeah, just, just because, uh, doesn't that mean that we would need to essentially pass an emergency ordinance? I mean, we have no way of suspending these, uh, fees without doing so, right?
Correct, but it will be a, not an emergency code change. Or this is what I need to talk to, this is why we, you know, we don't have legal on the phone with us tonight. And so there, there's ways.
She, we, we did get legal advice though, and she did recommend that we do an ordinance. It doesn't change the code, but what you're doing is passing an ordinance where you're suspending the fees.
Right.
Yeah. So it could be.
On a very limited basis, but on a limited time basis that'll work for doing the rest of this process.
But you will need to have six out of seven people in attendance and they all have to vote yes.
Correct.
Can you clarify though? This is Miranda. So if say you have seven people, but only four vote yes, it still can move forward. It just is not going to be an emergency ordinance. It would move forward as a regular ordinance with a 30 day effective date, correct?
That's my understanding.
So it really would depend on how many of you voted for it at the next meeting. And if it's not six out of seven, then it would take effect 30 days after the date of publication, which means it would take effect September 20th.
Okay.
And I think you actually have to have both ordinances available though, you know, one written as an emergency and one written as a regular. And then if the emergency doesn't pass, then you have to basically invoke to go to vote on the other one. You see what I'm saying? It's like a back.
Yeah.
So yeah, so those are the details I'm proposing. We like nail down here in the next week for the, for the agenda. Um, but it does bring up a very important thing. I just want to hear from all the trustees. Are, is everyone going to be here for the second meeting in August at our next meeting? Cause if, if only four of us are going to be here, there's really no point in even discussing this emergency ordinance. But I'm going to be here.
Planning on being here.
Tanya?
I mean, yeah, that's my hope. Uh.
Just great. That's two yeses. Eric?
For sure.
Alan Apt?
Hi, Willie.
Zee?
Yeah.
And Julian?
Yes, I'll be there.
Okay. We're not saying we'll have to vote for it, but we at least will have the number of votes necessary should we choose to do an emergency ordinance. Okay. I, you know, we've been, uh, discussing this now as a board for an hour. Um, not going to, not going to, yet quite yet, there's more chance, but I do want to give a chance for anyone from the public to weigh in. Because they've been hearing us go back and forth for a while and I'd like to hear from, I know at least one person from the public wants to speak on this. So I'm going to open this up now to the public. And, uh, I believe I just saw, please, uh, speak up if you would like to speak on this.
This is Ron Mitchell, resident of Netherlands. Uh, there's another element that I'm interested in as far as water tap fees. Years ago, many people paid, uh, tap fees, uh, PIF fees. And, uh, there was no charge for 15 years or so afterwards. And then the attitude became, well, these people took advantage of the town, uh, when they paid these because there was no uh, base fee as you're calling it now. So at that point they passed a ready to serve fee, uh, which was fairly punitive to people who had tried to help the town in their dire need and the town took and used the, the PIF fees for current operating expenses. As you, uh, seek to, uh, study the base fee, I think you should give a look at those people who paid those PIF fees a long time ago and give them some consideration uh, as well. And that was not part of your discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Hi, this is Kim Go.
Kim, yes.
We're getting feedback.
Fix that. There we go.
Okay. Thanks. Um, so I appreciate the direction that the board is going and all the hard work that's gone into it thus so far. I guess one thing that I wanted to point out is that we, you are talking about suspending, um, the base fees while we wait for the rate study. The rate study is an examination of use. So it doesn't even make sense to have those two tied. I still appreciate that you want to suspend the, the base fees. Um, but I also feel like um, it's, it hasn't been justified in charging extra base fee and, and no one's even talking about recovering the fees from the past two quarters that we've been paying. And then, and from what I can tell, it's, the code didn't change. It's the interpretation as it relates to the implementation changed. That's a very clear distinction. And, um, so that's where I'm going to be moving to recover the fees. And I really appreciate that you're moving towards, um, examining the base fees. Cause I do believe, just like Julian Taylor was saying, that, you know, if it's one unit, it's one pipe, then we should be charged for that. Um, the one other point that I want to just make, it just, um, you know, Karen Garrity mentioned that, um, now is not the time for, um, for us to be looking at the town during COVID to, uh, look at a reduction of, of revenue. Well, now is not the time to add and continue the financial burden on the town residents either. Um, let's keep in a, uh, you know, keep it all in perspective that, you know, I believe that we were spend, we spent upwards of $24,000 on flowers around town during COVID. $24,000. We're talking about 11. And you're also talking about it as a loss of revenue, as if you've already spent the money when that wasn't even, that shouldn't have even been charged in the first place. So just wanted to point out those nuances that, you know, I just don't feel like it's been just because it's based on an interpretation. And that's why it was implemented that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Any other members of the public?
This is Bar King. I have a comment.
Yes, Laura.
Um, I just mentioned, um, the, as we talk about fairness, the way that it currently is set up, it's never really been, uh, enforceable in a way that, uh, has been applied to the residences in any, um, consistent way. And so, you, you know, as we talk about fairness, the current system actually doesn't meet that criteria. Um, and so I very much appreciate, uh, the principled approach, uh, that the board is taking toward, um, trying to correct this, um, and make it, uh, Julian, I really appreciate you trying to make it more um, understandable, well-defined, enforceable, uh, not a sort of a gray area. Uh, let's, you know, one tap, one address, one fee. Let's just make that across the board. I think that makes a lot of sense. It's simple. And, uh, you know, the fact that somebody like our family of three is paying an extra, oh, you know, a hundred and $50 every, um, every bill, uh, more than a hundred and 50, um, compared with everybody in town paying an extra dollar fifty is, um, to me, it's much more fair to say we can make up that revenue with everyone than have just a few people paying so much more. So thank you for your work on this. I know it's, um, a lot of research and discussion. And I very much appreciate that everyone is, is working to, to have it make sense and be fair for everyone. And working also to help promote conservation of our water resource. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura. Anyone else? All right. We'll bring this back to the board. Um, for any other comments or thoughts of you that have come to your mind, otherwise I think we have a direction to move in the next two weeks. Uh, we will be seeing this again on, as an action item and our next board meeting.
And I will, uh, take the action item of reviewing the code more carefully as regards to definition of unit. Which I didn't find, find in the definitions section, but I will find it. It's all searchable and I will try to propose a, uh, clarification.
I was going to say, Julian, I think I'd very much like to, uh, to work with you and with town staff to draft this language and to come up with something that we can, uh, start really chewing on at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Happy to do.
All right. Uh, that I think we will be moving forward to the next discussion item. Oh, I think, let me see. I'll go back to sharing my screen. There it is. Wow. Um, and this is something that has come up in the last few weeks. I've had several members of the public, uh, approach me and about the idea of just, uh, looking at the idea of reinstituting a moratorium, more marijuana moratorium while the board looks at potentially limiting or coming up with a logical way of limiting the, or, um, rules to, I don't want to say limit, that's late night talk coming from me, but, um, to determine the appropriate number of marijuana businesses in town, whether that's based on a per population, per capita, a per capita basis, nearness to one another, whatever that might look like. Um, I just know that some people, there's a lot of concern when the last recreational dispensary came in, uh, after the moratorium expired last year. And, uh, there's now some concern that there are some additional commercial recreational facilities looking at coming into Netherlands. So I, this is just really a, throwing this out here as a discussion item to see if the board has, has a appetite in bringing forward a moratorium on marijuana, uh, dispensaries or marijuana facilities within the town of Netherlands while we can study, better study what we want to really have that commercial sector look like in our town. So. So throwing this out there now. Uh, it's a yes from Tanya.
Yes.
And behind that, too.
I mean, I think this is a really complicated issue because Netherlands kind of set itself up as the marijuana capital of the world. When it was, it legalized marijuana within the town limits, and that was pretty impressive, I thought. But it is certainly attracting a lot of marijuana dispensaries. And I I I don't want us to turn to circus marijuana, if we can possibly avoid it. Um, I think the concern is is how you would word that, how how we would how we would express that goal for the town.
And I'm not pretending to have any idea what that would, that language looks like yet. I'm just trying to see if there's interest in trying to find the language.
I mean, why can't we just say four is enough? I mean, I thought three was enough.
So.
It's capitalism.
I want Happy Trails back.
I do, too. It's such a bummer. I mean, we have kids and stuff. It's like, I have nothing against marijuana, but is that what we really want our whole town to be? No.
So.
I think we're good. I would say stop it now. We're good.
Well, I haven't heard from, here's Alan. Just I always want to find if there's appetite on tackling this. It sounds like from a lot of, most of the board, majority of the board, there seems to be an appetite. Alan?
I agree. I think we need to uh take a pause and discuss this.
So then my question goes to town staff, um, Miranda and Karen, is what can we do about this? And how how best can we go about this?
So it's going to be, I said there, we had a historical ordinance change that did adopt the moratorium. So we can revisit that some, I think similar to your last discussion, though, is that if you want this to go into effect immediately. And you'd have to have the the emergency ordinance, otherwise it would still take 30 days for effect. And I do, I did indicate in the aim here that it is important for you all to know that there is a retail dispensary that's coming before you for a public hearing at the next board meeting. And so I think that's something to take into consideration. Uh, if if you move forward as a regular ordinance change, then if that application is approved at the next meeting, they would be allowed to operate as a retail marijuana establishment. Despite the fact that a moratorium would come 30 days later.
Is there a reason, are there limitations on why we could reject their application? Are we only able to reject their application if they misspelled something or something, or can we reject it on principle?
We, you you cannot. I mean, it's like a liquor license. If they meet code and they meet the requirements, you can't kind of punitive choose to reject them. We did see that with a liquor license where the town didn't support it. And that person went to the state and they got their license through the state. Um, was then kind of forced the hand of the town. I think you're looking at a very similar thing here. Is that if this applicant does meet, and I'll give you the criteria next week. But if applicant does meet the criteria, you can't just deny based on just not liking it.
Okay, thanks.
Tony, I think you're trying to say something, but you're muted.
Where do they want to put another dispensary?
So this dispensary is located off of Fifth Street. It's 236 Fifth Street. It's this green building kind of right above the welcome sign. Um, the closest of streets are going to be Stinky Gulch and Fifth Street.
Oh, way back there. So they've already been approved by the planning commission and all that?
They don't have to go before the planning commission. So how a marijuana license works is the public hearing comes straight to the Board of Trustees.
And we can not reject them because there's no grounds to reject them?
Right. You have to review their application in terms of, does it meet municipal code requirements? And so if they do meet it, you you, I mean, it's you're the Board of Trustees, you can obviously do whatever you want. But you do run the risk of rejecting it just because you don't want it. They can file for an appeal with the state because you you failed to adhere to code, which has to be approved for if they meet the set criteria.
Isn't that like a residential area?
It's, they're actually right below residential.
So it's kind of like where the automobile places are?
Exactly. That's considered general commercial. So they're right on the thrust of going from general commercial to a fully residential space.
Gotcha. Wow. Wow.
So, Miranda, I mean, so our only option, if if we wanted to have a moratorium, we could have, if we had an emergency ordinance go into effect, first action item of next week. Prior, just prior to their hearing. How bad is that?
It would stop it. I think that one thing you you all have to be mindful of is is whether you're being punitive to the applicant themselves. Um, if you're kind of doing it because you don't agree with who's coming forward. Again, you just open yourself up for that, that kind of legality side of it, of them claiming that they were treated unfairly. I weren't given their their chance to have their public hearing.
Well, I mean, I don't even know who these folks are. Um, so I I don't, I'm not sure that it'd be have anything to do with the applicant themselves. Um, I think it's like deeply, deeply disappointing that this is happening. And I mean, what Mayor Larson just said is very appealing.
But I'd like to get, I'd like to get um Jennifer Madsen's opinion on that. I think, like again, like I have to publicly notice a public hearing. So we are noticing that's that's going on this week's paper. Um, I just, I would like to get some, unless Karen, you feel like you can answer. I feel like we need to get Jennifer involved in that decision.
Yeah, I mean, I I especially if you're talking about taking a tactic where you try to ask that before the hearing. I I do think that could be a slippery slope.
Mm-hmm.
Alternately, can we draft right now a version of ordinance 797 that we just changed the dates on? And pass it tonight as an emergency ordinance?
I don't know, Karen, if we want to try to like get Jennifer on the phone. Be to hold a hold a special meeting to do it. And what you guys would like to meet next week, have an emergency meeting specific to this moratorium.
I could see this turning into something very, very messy if they've already made application in good faith.
Yeah.
Whether we like them or not.
No, the applicants.
Good faith.
Right. So the applicants were aware that this is before the board. They actually, the applicants are who you received the public comment from today. Uh, I can just tell you, the applicants are the kind castle. Um, and now they were aware, but you know, again, to Julian's point, they also are aware of how an ordinance works. And that typically it's 30 days and that they would be within that timeframe. So they wouldn't be allowed to continue to move forward. Um, you know, I'm not sure what what stance they would take if denied because a special meeting was held to act that much moratorium. Um, but they are, they they'd submit their application in good faith. They would have a public hearing.
I'm sorry, this is, this is then uh to not a, not a dispensary, but a recreational use uh place, a place of marijuana use.
That's not what they're coming forward to you right now. So they're coming forward to the board's public hearing for just a retail marijuana dispensary. Now, they may in the future come forward to look for a for-profit club. But at that point in time, it would require an SRU agreement. So they'd have to start with the planning commission, and it would be a quasi judicial matter. But all that's coming before you at this public hearing is a retail marijuana dispensary where they did um retail marijuana and marijuana infused edible.
Basically, the same thing they just opened.
Correct.
Yeah, why, why would they do another one?
Um, I I can't speak to that. I think the applicant will have to tell you. I mean, he is, he's actually been leasing the building for a while. Um, he's had it since the beginning of the year, at least.
But we really shouldn't even, we really shouldn't be discussing any specifics.
No, we can't.
That that's a, that's very conducive to you. The question is, what do we, do we want to try and institute a moratorium?
I'm with you on that, yeah.
The, we, the outcome, you know, there is this, there is no safe way to do this. If we try to institute a moratorium, I think legal will say we're probably opening ourselves up. But to do so at the meeting in two weeks is probably not the way to do it. It would really have to come down to an emergency meeting of the Board of Trustees next week.
We have to get six out of seven votes for it.
Right, we'd have to have full attendance.
Well, full attendance? What if Jonathan's not there?
Well, full attendance meaning the six right now.
Okay. Well, can we do it now?
You don't, you don't have an ordinance in front of you. You need to stop something you're not looking at. So you need to have, and well, yes, it may error in likely Woodmere 797 to adopt something you're not looking at. It's just not good. Our attorney is available right now. Um, I just texted her. Do you want me to get her on the phone?
Uh, yeah, I think that would be good if she's available to dial in. I think there's some legal questions that we could use some inter intra um advice on. Being, uh, while I, well, Jennifer dialed in and people chew on this, this is a open discussion item for the town. So any members of the public would like to weigh in on this and give an opinion? Not seeing any, okay. Well, uh, well, let's take a five minute, five minute break. It's like, uh, we'll come back at 9:30 and hopefully at that point, we'll have our town attorney online with us. But uh, this would be about the time we'd be normally be taking a quick break anyway. So everyone uh back in five minutes at 9:30. Karen, does it sound like Jen's going to be able to join us?
Uh, yeah, she's on the phone right now, Chris.
Oh, okay.
But Karen, do you want to three-way call her? Because it's really hard to hear people if they're calling, like you're trying to have them talk through your phone.
Um, she's on my landline.
It's just like when you, when I try to add in Chris Paray to the to the planning commission, it's very challenging unless I three-way call her in. Which is maybe what I should do right now instead.
Or can she call the the access number for this meeting?
I can three-way call her super fast, and I think that's what we should do instead. Okay. So I'll hang up with her? Yes. Okay. It'll be like two seconds, Chris. I'll get her. Three-way call you.
This is where we're at. All right, she.
See a colon user.
Yeah, let me just merge her. Jennifer, are you there? Yes. Okay, Mayor Larson, can you hear her?
Uh, we can hear her loud and clear. Thank you, Miranda.
Great. Yep.
And thank you, Jen, for joining us on a really short notice.
Sure. Am I in the meeting right now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
Uh, it is now 9:31. We were just on a five minute break. So I'm going to bring us back together on this to return to discussion on a potential marijuana moratorium. And so Jen, I don't know how much you know of where we are on this topic. But basically, we're looking at trying to figure out what pos, what options there are for instituting a marijuana moratorium on short notice for the town of Netherlands. And the risks thereof.
So um, I, there is an an ordinance in front of you tonight. Um, that's an action item and, you know, nothing is drafted. So I would recommend against um taking action on a moratorium tonight. Um, it would need to be, if you're looking to do something that's effective immediately, it would need to be an emerg, emergency ordinance. Um, which would need to be approved by six of the seven trustees. Um, so the other options would be to have a special meeting or to have a, to bring it back at the next meeting of the Board of Trustees. And I understand that's the night um that the application is is potentially going to be before the Board of Trustees. Um, but you could um, you could still act on it that night.
If we were to, if we were to institute an emergency ordinance, either at a special meeting next week or as the first action item in two weeks. Does that put us at any legal risk for appearing, um, I think the word punitive was put up for it. Um, that we're specifically targeting a single business? Or single applicant?
You know, that's typically why moratoriums are in place. I mean, if there's a reason why you're wanting to consider um review and study of changes to the municipal code. Um, you know, that's why moratoriums are are put in place. Um, and oftentimes, there are applications um that are in front of the municipal body.
The fact that they have been submitting their paperwork and submitting for a hearing in good here, in good faith, doesn't negate the ability, our ability to put in, put a moratorium in place.
Um, yes, and I, Miranda, in the code, is there time limitations on when the hearing can take place? Or is this when it was scheduled?
So it's within forty-five days. And so given what was on the, because at the time, the, um, forty-five days from when it gets submitted to me, which actually would be mid September, but because there was limited stuff on the agenda, I wanted to bring it forward earlier because we would be ready earlier. But it's forty-five days from the date of submission and they submitted their application last week.
Okay. Yeah, so you wouldn't be, I mean, is the moratorium is just going to put a hold on that application?
Okay.
Is there a risk that they could challenge it? Um, yes, but the, the fact, you know, the moratorium does stop, does stop the, does allow for study and does stop any processing of any further applications. So, um, you know, would it maybe give it, be a little bit stronger argument if it was done at a special meeting? Yes, um, but what are they losing out on? They're losing out if they don't, at some point don't get a license or wouldn't be given a license in August. You know, the, the claim is that they're leaving a, uh, is losing a license. It's not a taking anything like that.
Okay. So you think, my other final question was, is there reason to do it at an emergency meeting next Tuesday versus in two weeks?
It, it would probably be cleaner if you did it next week.
Okay.
An emergency meeting.
Does any other board of trustees have questions regarding, um, the potential moratorium for the town attorney? Tanya, did you just raise your hand there or has that been up for a while? I missed that.
Uh, no, it's been up for a while.
Okay.
But I mean, I've already spoken, so.
No, I was just wondering if anyone had a question specifically for the attorney, otherwise, um.
It sounds like we can go ahead and do a moratorium next week.
So that would be, my question for the board is, uh, we would really, you know, theoretically we could do this with a knot of four, but to do this, we really need a knot of six to say that we want to proceed with a moratorium, emergency more ordinance, moratorium for next Tuesday night. And so I'm just going to call roll here. Lindsay?
Yeah, I think, I think we should do it.
All right, Julian?
I'm feeling uneasy about it. Uh, I, I'd have to think about this a little bit and, and see the wording perhaps.
Okay. Uh, Tanya?
I mean, I definitely think we need a moratorium. I think four is enough, but, um, and I, I wasn't planning on being necessarily home tomorrow. Uh, it would be, I'll, I'll try and be there. I mean, I want to be there, but I might be on the road.
Next Tuesday?
I mean, I hope to be home by seven, but you never know.
All right, Eric?
Yes, I think we should do this.
Okay, Alan?
Yes.
All right, and I also think so. So, um, that's a knot of five and a half-ish. Um, so what I'd like to propose we do is, um, using ordinance, uh, seven ninety-seven as a, um, template. We'll come up with language, uh, for a draft ordinance and we'll try and get that around to members of the board of trustees ASAP. So this is something we can hopefully get done, you know, by Thursday, have people see the draft ordinance and then schedule a emergency meeting of the board of trustees for Tuesday, uh, August eleventh? I think today's the fourth, right? Yeah, August eleventh. Um, and that will be, it would be an action item. So this would also be something we'll be, uh, advertising to the public, doing full noticing and would very much appreciate, uh, public comment on, I believe. So does that sound like a, a good approach to town staff and particularly town attorney?
Yes, that works. Yes, this is Jennifer.
Okay.
So we don't have to meet the, uh, any requirement for public noticing then, a certain amount of days?
I'm just noticing the meeting at that point, so I'll have to notice the meeting in four hours in advance. I think, uh, it gets a little tricky for me because I have to publicly notice the building on Saturday. So I will be moving forward with the application as, as intended, which means the public hearing notice will be in this week's newspaper and the building itself will be publicly noticed. So that could cause some confusion, um, but because the moratorium's not in place, I am moving forward as, as it.
And the special noticing requirements needed for an emergency ordinance, I'm guessing?
No, not, not on this type of issue. If it were affecting the, if it were land use issue, then yes. If it were affecting, you know, the zoning code, yes, but not, um, not marijuana licensing.
Okay. Then it sounds like we have a plan and a path forward. Town staff have any questions for us on that?
I had a quick question. Sorry, this is trustee Convisal. When we are required to give twenty-four hours notice, uh, do we typically, uh, give notice just as soon as we know? Or do we typically wait until it is twenty-four hours in advance?
Well, I think to Mayor Larson's point, if, if we, if Jennifer gets me the ordinance by Thursday, then I would notice it Thursday. I would notice it like I do a normal packet, if I'm posting the whole packet with the name. Um, so it sounds like we'll do that before the week gives up.
Perfect.
All right, uh, I think that covers that. Thank you, Jennifer, for interrupting your Tuesday night to dial in with us.
No problem, anytime.
And, uh, we'll be in touch very soon about drafting, uh, ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. I would also, so the board of trustees, uh, because this is something we'll be talking about next week on an emergency setting, um, talk to your networks, uh, get out there and ask people what their feelings are on it. And, um, that's, that's how I heard about it was from other people and concerned that there was something coming down the line that they didn't like. And so we should, uh, help get the word out there too. Um, that includes our agenda for this evening. Uh, moving into other business. Of which I have none.
Uh, I thought we had something about the, uh, MOU, whatever that is, the. I thought it was on the agenda.
Yeah, that was in the consent agenda. We proved that at the very beginning of the night.
God, I missed it. All right.
Um, there is going to be a signing ceremony for that MOU on August thirteenth, which is I believe like a Wednesday or a Thursday, like middle of the week. And it's going to be at like ten AM. So yeah, Thursday at ten AM, they're holding a signing ceremony for that MOU up at the Forest Service Station on Ridge Road, if anyone's.
They really wanted us all there, huh? Wednesday at ten AM.
I know, yeah.
Okay.
What?
Oh, just on the MOU, Eric, keep the public involved.
Do my best. Don't know, don't know how, but I will try.
Um, I do want to call out, um, I want to call out Miranda, I want to call out Chris Pelletier, who's, I guess he jumped off already. Nikki from Public Works did an incredible job and, and Karen for the town cleanup this weekend. That was just such an incredibly well-run event. And, uh, you know, SAB was there, giving out the energy efficiency boxes. The farmer's market was there, the, just, you know, so many good things, uh, so many good people coming through and just good things about it. And it was really, really well-run, well-attended. And want to give town staff congratulations on that event.
Yeah, great job, people.
Thank you.
This is Julian and I have one point I'd like to make. So I know Chris is not here and, uh, I will send him an email separately. But I would like to apologize to Chris and Karen. I admit, I am still having trouble understanding the verbiage around the tables that we discussed. But I just did the calculations against the data in the tables and the data is agreeing with my data. And so I apologize for being so tough on that. I was misunderstanding the wording around it, partly because it looked like we were using the word building in place of an address based upon the edited wording. And a building, of course, is, can be multiple addresses. That was how I was misinterpreting this and it was all my fault. I was not, I, I should have looked just at the numbers and not at the explanation. So I apologize and I'm going to send an apology to Chris as well.
Oh, thanks, Julian. I, I actually really appreciated your input and wish that I had included the suggested, uh, changes to code. I didn't even think about that in the aim. We were just focused on getting the data and then, you know, what the process would have to look like. But that might have helped with this conversation a little, so, so I apologize for that.
Not a problem. Thank you. So, so anyway, I, I'm, I'm just saying that when we're working on the wording, I am feeling now very comfortable with the numbers we have from Chris and I'm going to feel much more comfortable moving forward with, uh, with redrafting of the code.
All right, looking forward to working on you, working with you on that in the coming week. Anyone else have anything to bring up or a motion?
Uh, for German, this is Alan.
I second it.
Motion and a second, Miranda?
I didn't because I'm on my phone now. I'm not sure if he seconded it.
That was something like. Trustee Taylor.
Uh, Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee App.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth. Yes. Trustee Corvallin. Trustee Corvallin, are you there?
Yes.
Trustee comes in my.
Yes.
All right, nine forty-seven PM and the meeting adjourned. Thank you guys all so very much. So it's good conversations tonight, great discussions. And I'll talk to you all again very soon, I'm sure.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.